Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now we'll move to the roll call.
Mayor Masters?
Yes.
Axon member Zerkey? Gramlett?
Here.
Storm?
Here.
Liz?
Here.
Holton?
Here.
Holton?
Here.
Roll call for the Port, please.
Commissioner Groves?
Here.
Alston?
Here.
Assurin?
Here.
Gramlett?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Thank you, and now we'll move to the next item on our agenda, which is a review of the current downtown plan. Mr. Cook?
And we are honored tonight because Holly is going to handle that piece for us. I think an old person's going to sit by and...
Thank you, Holly.
Does everyone in here know who Holly is?
You can tell my name is Holly Howell and I am a mayor for Rakerford. So this is just a brief summary of the existing Cascade Locks Downtown Development Plan and Strategy.
I did not. There's extras, that's fine. I'll take that extra.
So mostly I made enough copies for everyone, but what I provided tonight was just a brief summary of the existing Cascade Locks Downtown Development Plan and Strategy. And even though I was not here when this was drafted, it ended up on my desk last, so that's why I'm doing this summary here. So in a nutshell, the current Downtown Development Plan and Strategy was adopted by Cascade Locks City Council in January of 2004. The purpose of the plan was to create a comprehensive master plan and strategy for the development of downtown Cascade Locks. And this plan was written by team of consultants, but it was guided by local voices. We have a citizens advisory committee and we had a technical advisory committee as well. The plan was funded by the TGN grant program, which is a collaboration between the Oregon Department of Transportation and the Oregon Department of Land Management. So this plan really builds on a lot of previous planning work that predated this effort. And the intent was to establish guidelines and standards for property development and redevelopment in your downtown district. It made recommendations for amendments to the city's comprehensive plan, zoning code, and TSP, which is your transportation system plan. And the end goal was a pedestrian-friendly, mixed-use, prosperous downtown district that was historically consistent. And the plan did this by making recommendations for physical improvements to the downtown district, about the things, those were things such as crosswalks, street furniture, street lighting, awnings in driveways, as well as policies and programs to implement those specific changes, such as changes to your zoning code, as well as the recommendations for urban realty district development. So on the second page of that summary document, you'll see a couple of frequently asked questions at the bottom. And those provide a little more information about the design and character that's defined in the plan. And there's four main elements to that character. The first is a Cascadian style that's described as heavy timbered natural and native stone, and that's seen in Molten with Falls Lodge and Timberline Lodge. The second is to be consistent with the bridge of the gods architecture, so that's heavy intricate ironwork. The third is being cognizant of the native landscape of the gorge, so rather than uniform linear street state, we're having more of the clusters of trees. And then the fourth element that's called out is extreme weather in Cascade Locks, so they recommend pedestrian-friendly environment by providing shelters through awnings and open house. And that last piece there is, the question is, how does the plan suggest we fund these recommendations? And the plan makes a number of different recommendations ranging from state and federal support, obviously city funding, merchant and property owner support, and private foundation support as well. I pulled a couple images from the plan itself. There are some here from the street state design, as well as some of the street state furniture, such as the benches and the lyceum. On this page, the plan made recommendations for both the eastern and western gateway improvements to downtown. And then finally, there's a map that calls out the improvements in the downtown district. So while this was a really big overview, you're more than welcome to go online and take a look at the plan yourself. On the bottom of the first page, I've provided the city's webpage, and then also how to find this document from there. Any questions around the map?
These are guidelines. Are there any control points or decision points that determine whether or not they're followed when there's an occurrence?
The city council did adopt this plan, but as best I can tell, not many of the policies were implemented in terms of revisions to the zoning code or the comprehensive plan or the TSP. And correct me if I'm wrong, but that's my understanding, yeah?
The zoning, Bobby Walker's part of planning permission, as I was, and he sat through one of the parents, and part of that, one of the business owners wanted to redo their storefront, and that was part of the application process. It had to be a part of, it had to comply with this downtown plan, and so it was adopted into that.
Okay, great, so the design review standards are a part of the...
Yeah, the design review standards are part of that.
Okay, great. That answer your question okay?
I'm not sure, because was it the city that put the brick wall up by where Brad's shop is? Because as I understand it, that didn't follow the downtown plan.
That's not in the downtown zone.
Oh, okay.
Downtown stops right around the school.
Okay, thank you.
Well, to add on to what Jeff was saying, when we went to the plan, what it says is it has to historically match what is Cascade Locks, and that is so broad that, because historically Cascade Locks, it's been a mismatch of building size. I mean, we've had tents, it was a tent city one time almost, when they built a dam back in the... It's very broad, and so it's kind of hard to steer people toward the cascade. Although we've had some people do it voluntarily, and it's very good. It is very broad.
And previously, there were other downtown plans. Not this one.
Right.
There were other styles for downtown plans, too.
In that particular, what you're talking about is what's visible at the store, charger, when we went with that, this is back in the early seventies.
Matt, can I just say something here? One of the things in trying to bring our people who are in business here in Cascade Locks now, and as a past business owner in Cascade Locks and going through this, I think I was, when we were in, working with business, it was probably the plan before this and then this plan. And I've just got to say, in getting people excited, that our actual business owners in town, excited about looking at revitalization, it has not, for right now, has nothing to do for them, so I'm speaking on their behalf, and anyone who's a business owner here who feels differently about that, please speak. But this is the consensus that I kind of feel from them, is not to be looking at their land that they're investing, they're the ones that are all in here in Cascade Locks, you know, live or die here. But they are wanting to look at how can we together get the things that are up and running, that are streets and are benches, the things that the city are lights, and the things that I think we need to be working, we need to be looking at is LED lights, looking to the future of those right now especially. So I just want to say that on behalf of the business owners, that they want us, they're willing to come out and help, and they're really glad to hear that we're willing to come in and work together to help. So I don't know, you know, when we're starting to talk about how their buildings should look, I kind of would hedge against that right now, personally.
Paul, I don't know how you envision taking into a discussion for vision.
No, you're fine.
I kind of want the Paul, the Paul's spot just a little bit, but from our meeting that we had, the joining of the Port for the Economic Development, talking to Bobby's counterpart that works in the DOWs, he was, I can't remember his name, he works for ODOT, he was part of the mothling revitalization effort that happened in the street scape project. He educated me that you were part of that down there too, and how ODOT was partnered with and started landscaping sidewalks and street scape. Can you tell us a little bit about your involvement and how the funds that could be out there for grants that could help us at least get our street scape project moving forward, to have this vision of the Cascadian theme, might be out there to help us to move forward to that? Because you seem to be pretty well into that, clinging to that.
There's the segue. So actually, I paid Jeff ten bucks.
As long as it's under fifty, you're good.
Here's where we started. You see on the wall here, a whole bunch of priorities that the city council worked on, and the current city council is making some adjustments. But one of the steady themes in all of this is what are we going to do with downtown? Because it now becomes one of the major drivers for job creation and economic development in Cascade Locks. The big project that we were all hoping for is probably not going to happen, and we can't sit around and wait for somebody outside to do something. So when the council created with the Port, the Joint Economic Development Task Force, that group sat down and did some prioritization. Downtown was one of those high priorities. We also had Mike Ragsdale come in from the city of Newburgh and talk with a select group of people about what you have to do. And I'm going to get exactly to your point, Jeff, because this is exactly where we are at right now. We need to sit down and figure out, what do we want our downtown to look like in twenty to thirty years? Without a heck of a lot of detail, because this is our opportunity. If you read the small print on the meeting notice, it said, "We're going to create energy and excitement, and we're going to end up with a steering committee that's going to help both the Port and the city begin to drive an action plan." And I'm not talking about something like this. We've got to figure out exactly what we want the downtown to look like, to be like, to function like, and then we've got to partner with existing businesses, property owners in the community to make that happen. If it is a huge cleanup campaign to get started, great. If it's buying paint to paint the old fire station, that's great. But we can't sit here and do nothing and let the future escape from us, okay? So what this is about is visioning. Now Jeff brought up Moffin. Moffin started out with a very simple strategic plan that had a vision and a list of strategic initiatives. And their very first project was painting an old business in downtown. And over the years, that plan moved from painting to fixing up to ODOT improvements, to street trees, or whatever else it is you want. Without us having in our mind what our vision is and our own little plan, we're going to have a hard time getting any state or federal bucks if the state or federal government even has any money left to share with us. So we have to know what it is we're trying to create, what our priorities are. Did that answer your question, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
So that's what this is about, Jeff.
And I think the simple solution is where we need to go. You know, we get this thing, as you said, we get this thing too cumbersome, and we can be doing two things at once. We can be painting the building, and we can be looking for money from the state of the feds for bigger projects like doing sidewalks, or you know, lampposts, or whatever like that. We already have talked to one ODOT person who has some grants available and willing to write them for bicycle themes, rest area, you know, sidewalk, that kind of stuff. So things that's reachable and tangible to us, I think, is what the direction.
And thank you. I didn't pay you, but I'll see after. If we don't envision Cascade Locks downtown being the center of bicycle and pedestrian traffic and events, and the greatest Christmas lighting event in the Pacific Northwest, we will never get any money from the outside for that. That's why visioning becomes important. So what we're going to do tonight is make you work real hard, and we've talked to the sheriff's department, and they are not going to let us out of here until midnight if we don't get our work done. So we're going to do three things. We're going to create a vision for downtown. Now by vision, we don't want a seven-sentence paragraph about what you see. We want you to go up to thirty thousand feet, go out twenty and thirty years, look down, and what do you want to see in Cascade Locks? If you see street-lined Main Street, that's all we want to know. We don't want to know what company you buy the seeds from, what time of the year you plant them, how many times you water them. We'll figure that out.
So how is that different from the redevelopment that she was talking about? Because that just shows everything.
Exactly.
Downtown, how it's laid out, drawn, how it's different.
That's a good question, because we're going to reconfirm that. There may be visionary pieces that we see that we can pull from that. There may be some that we never even thought of at that time.
I'd like to bring up, I've been working with the Troutdale, and I have pictures of what they look like fifteen years ago. And if you look at these pictures, they are just dust and dirt and grass and weeds, just like Cascade Locks. And they put a vision together, and if you go down Main Street, right down down the street, it's beautiful. And they did it, they made it happen. And they said that they want to be a picture to help show how they can do it. So I have a lot of information from Troutdale.
Go ahead.
When this plan was developed, it was developed on Crowe's.
Oh.
That's what it looked like, yeah. And then that picture with the pier and all of the rooftops were at different levels, just like, and we use the example of Troutdale.
Good, so hang on to that stuff.
I haven't.
Once we do the vision piece, then we're going to talk about what are the priorities, what are the actions that we need to take to deliver that vision. And then the third thing we're going to walk out of the room with is the creation of a steering committee, and this is where the sheriff helps us. You do not get out of this room until a steering committee steps up and agrees to work with the city and the Port to begin to put together a formal vision, a series of activities that we're going to undertake on our own, and be prepared to go to the city council and the board at the Port, the Port Commission, and say, "This is what we want to do in the downtown area." Now, if you're all in here, it's too late, you can't get out. Anybody have any questions?
I might not be able to stay for the whole time, we've got three little babies at home, but I wanted to...
Well, we might, we might create an exception for you. All right, anybody, everybody know what we're going to do tonight, then? Anybody disagree? Shoot, I thought you'd be able to use that gavel if we had a disagreement there.
I wanted to present something that I've been working on with tourism committee about flower baskets downtown. And I have met with three different cities, Troutdale, Fairview, and then the council that was, but Troutdale, and worked with the park's lead, park's recreation woman, Michelle Rosenberg, and she's written a letter, and I actually typed it up because she was busy, but it's a letter about how the hanging baskets has impacted tourism and the business community, and how special and important it is. I have a letter from her, as well as from the front, but I just wanted to talk about chewing.
So what we have to figure out, then, is are hanging baskets in our vision? If they are, then you may want to volunteer to be a part of the steering committee to help put some meat on what we come out of here tonight, to determine how we go forward. So I want to stop right here now and say, we're going to now, this is, we're going to do brainstorming to determine what is our vision for the downtown area.
Flowers, flowers, flowers.
All right, so we are a beautiful community with lots of...
We want to be like the Port. The Port is beautiful, it's got greenery, it's got costas. Yeah, beautiful flowers, trees.
Well, excuse me, Kay, to Jesse's comment about Troutdale, I was there with her at one of the meetings, and this one gal said they were concerned about finances, as we are also. And they were thinking, no, they're not going to do it that year, except the businesses raised cane, and they said, "You will do this because people commented on it," so just to share that point.
So you see how this works, folks? This is not a lot of detail. We're at thirty thousand feet, we're twenty years out, and as we look down, we see a beautiful downtown with lots of flowers.
No weeds in the gutter.
Can you add trees to that?
Who said trees?
Oh, trees.
Do you want, tell me a little bit more about it.
Like...
What is it you see? Is it a tree-lined street?
Yes. But not trees that are real tall, but like maybe a cherry tree, because it has all the different colors.
Okay, who else? Yes, David.
It'd be good to have a city that's open year-round.
Absolutely.
That's the goal.
Troutdale talked about that, they have flower containers that they actually incorporate fall colors, and instead of the flowers and the foliage, have kept tourism money in. They've kept the tourists coming back year after year and spending time down the street. So if we can get some fall colors in, some kind of thematic and peace, then we can kind of hang out on the streets longer, instead of just happening.
Paul, I just want to say, one difficulty for me seeing that vision is that we're in a transportation revolution right now. And what will our vehicles be like? What will, you know, what's going to be, we're right in the middle of changing that. We're right, if I'm looking thirty years down the road, it could be that we're going to be looking at something completely different in our vehicles.
So how do we need that transportation?
Well, I see, I do, personally, I see that we should have some roofed area, because we're eighty, you know, eighty inches a year of rain. So if we want people here year-round, I think we do, in some way, need to have some protection from the weather. But, I mean, are we going to have electric vehicles, and we need to make sure we have plug-ins there, you know, in our downtown area? I, you know, I don't know. I'm just, so it's hard for me to...
No, the answer is, no, the answer is not that you don't know. What is it you see? Do you see this downtown being a place that somebody with extra bucks in their pocket in Portland with an electric vehicle can drive up here and plug in?
Yeah.
And go have a hamburger?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, so we have a charging station downtown. What else? Who else?
Yeah, with that charging station, you know, a canopy or some kind of protection that, you know, when their car's being charged, if they can walk into town and, you know, visit the stores, you know, without being rained on, and, you know, benches maybe covered,
All right, so we have benches?
Yeah.
Jeff?
An architectural consistent theme throughout the downtown?
Yeah, wood shops.
How about a real simple thing like bicycle racks?
Did you ever solve the problem of public restaurants?
Yeah, future may be more traffic around this town, we need more public parking, we need more bicycle parks, because a lot of bikers, they go to town, no phone, no tire. They should walking around, they're shopping around, loo around, but we don't have any public bicycle parks.
Okay.
Eighty-eight compliance.
Let's see, who's next? Mare, and then, and then Gail, go ahead.
Well, first of all, I think the Port's done a great job of starting the process of making this a destination for biking, whether it's, you know, the mountain biking trails, but also, I think ODOT's got that project of Portland to the DOWs on the Old Highway. But I think being a bike-friendly town is a part of our future, with some of the things that are already in place. And I also wanted to just comment on the beautification, using lots of flowers and things that, along with what Dave's saying, having a kind of seasonal-style decoration so that, because the seasons are very distinct here, it's good to kind of acknowledge that this time of year, you want, you know, like you mentioned, have, you know, be well-known for the Christmas light displays. That can be, it's harder to grow flowers in sub-thirty temperatures, but...
So there's some beautiful brasses that turn color and...
And there's also these Christmas lights that turn color, and, you know, and that can kind of take the, that can be, we've got some of that already, but I think we can enhance it and make it even better.
Who else? Gail, did you have one?
I don't know, I just, I just remembered we had a big issue some time ago about access to public restaurants. You know, if you're going to have a lot of people walking around, they don't always want to have to go from one town to the other.
We have a significant increase in seniors and so many eighty-eight compliances.
Who else? Joey?
Well, I was thinking parking on one side of the town, that either in the west, that parking isn't going to be really through town. We have a big parking lot in Moody up in where the Port's got property on Moody, or down in the industrial park, and then we have electric pods that drive people through, through the town. So the parking, because I think about Banff has that, you know, a lot of big destinations like that have all their big parking really at one side of the town, especially when you've only got a real small area.
Okay.
I don't want to expand on that, because I believe that what we should do is make angle parking on the westbound traffic. And what that's going to show is that downtown is busy, and it's going to have more, there can be more parking spaces. So that's something we need to address with ODOT, is how big is that right away, and can we have angle parking on one side of the street? But I believe one of the other commissioners mentioned slowing the speed limit down when they're ramping downtown.
You have one?
Keeping open views have delivered, and that includes overlooked parks or lower class of potential. There needs to be many views, so as people are going by on their bicycles or walking, they need, we need, we can't have just building after building after building. We need to have some space so people can see through.
Right, yes.
I was saying like a water feature, Hood River has a fountain, and kids play in it in summer, and maybe their Christmas party there. Maybe artwork downtown, you have...
Or in the park.
So who else had one? Yeah, Dave?
Services to, to, to tourists of a wider range, upscale hotel, upscale restaurants, as well as mid-range and more economical services and accommodations.
Well, yeah, Jeff, and then we'll go to, what have you? I've seen you, what's your name?
Tom.
Okay, we'll go here first.
We talked about not having the views of the river obstructed, but think non-traditional where you'd use a sidewalk that's not, just right next to the roadway, but have that sidewalk integrated in with the buildings, so you're on the riverside view, so you get people out walking around, so you may have some buildings obstructing the view, but you have people get out and walk around through the businesses, and so a non-traditional type sidewalk that integrates through the business portion of the shops.
Kind of like coastal towns or something like that?
Yeah, like that.
Going into the coast and then to that.
Yes?
Ideally, to be able to relocate two gas stations to utilitarian sites, so those, that key property would be available to the view of development. And perhaps with electric cars, gas stations would go away.
Mayor?
I like the idea of having businesses in all the bu- buildings downtown, thriving businesses.
Who else? Yes?
And I bring some residential down into town and have residential, maybe commercial with residential mixed in town.
Yes?
An interactive playground like Hood River has.
And what is that?
They have all different kinds of things to do. You can, they have a, like a, a big musical thing set up, and they have big wooden mallets tied to rope, and you can play the music on it. You can climb through huge heights, you can scale a rock wall, there's all kinds of things to do there. And it was even fun for us to do, not just kids. I did it all.
How, how was it?
It was fun. They have this round thing that you stand on, on the ground, and it's angled at a certain angle, and then you have one person on the high side and one person on the low side, and if you get it going right, you can actually spin in a circle.
Yes?
Fully functioning railroad depot. There's plenty of stopping every day.
Mark?
Yeah, we, we need to sign on the freeway saying that we're open, that when, when things are, you know, whatever we have going in town, we need to let people know where they can stop in and, and, you know, all the, all the events that we have.
And better signs?
Small, medium-sized alternative energy devices that might almost look like art spinning, but generating power.
Who else? Yes?
Better signs for venues, because a lot of the venues, some of the people have to make their own cardboard.
Wifi covers the whole city.
This side of the room is gonna be quiet, so you're gonna get called down. Who else?
Major fish market.
I'd like to see some native plants, like Indian grasses, things that kind of represent the unique environment that we live in.
Actually, presence of Native Americans would be, given the history and culture of the area, the tribe's presence.
Like artwork?
In, in businesses and... Tourist guide.
Tourist guide?
Yes.
Who else?
Use of green energy, that our, our community is, is, has green energy, that we have either solar or, or hydro or something that, more efficient use of finances.
Okay, what else? Okay, this side of the room, it's your turn. We got the tourism chairman sitting there. Donna, when you look forward twenty, thirty years, what do you see?
I don't know, this looks good. More businesses.
More businesses?
And we need buildings to put businesses in.
Who else? Mark?
Yeah, we need a bigger building, like an expo that we can have sports shows and, you know, there were shows during the year.
Mayor?
During certain parts of the year, we really need to be welcoming to the sailing community. The port's obviously done a good job of that already, and I think we can enhance it even more.
Dave?
A complete range of health services available in town, that could be doctors, chiropractors, dentists.
Okay.
I just heard that, school.
Yeah. Boy, shouldn't I?
We need a bank. What credit you give them?
What else? What else do you see there, Jeff?
You can go off to school, but you can take it a step further and have a community college campus, you know, for auxiliary here for a destination, not only for recreation and business, but for people who come to school here that want to be here, yeah.
Yeah, many years ago, Mount Hood did have classes up here. Yes, yes.
What else do you all see in the future for your downtown?
Better street lighting.
You just want regular streetlights?
No, we want up-to-date LED street lighting.
Up-to-date or unique or ornamental or streetlights that fit into Jeff's vision of downtown?
Yes.
Need some gingerbread.
And you know what? I see our trend in Cascade Locks absolutely being physical activity. Biking, hiking, sailing, and for it to feel vi- that there's a vibrancy of that kind of energy. And, and I don't know if that's something we do artistically to make that happen, but I think that's gonna be our trend, is that we are nature and we're away from their normal life to be able to come out and enjoy.
You want people in Portland and Seattle when they get up on Saturday morning to say, gee, what are we gonna, we're going to Cascade Lock?
Exactly, can't wait to get there.
Exactly.
They come Friday afternoons, stay all day, night Friday, it's happening. And in that case, you're gonna need a twenty-four hour stay, so that you can get something to eat after six o'clock.
Even the inner-city administrator needs that. It's, it actually wakes you up when you leave at nine o'clock here, and you go to find a bite to eat. Jeff?
Thirty years from now, that vision, looking forward, I want our town to compete and Leavenworth go, wow, what did they do to take business away from us, to compete with the Leavenworth in those small destination towns, and be that town that people want to go to all the time like that, have their recreation, be the recreation destination.
I read that they have about, what is it, two hundred thousand, a hundred thousand lights on like that.
For the Christmas, yeah. It's beautiful, for the Christmas.
Yes.
Yeah, we're going here, Leavenworth.
Yeah, I know, so she, she changed, we don't have very much project. Future, we need to twenty-four hours of police service, twenty-four hours of emergency service, and twenty-four hours of fire station service.
Okay. What else? So Holly, what's in their plan that they've adopted that isn't up there already?
There are a lot of, there are a lot of community jobs.
Architecture's not up there.
Well, it is.
Professional.
What is it?
Yep, there it is. Yes?
I'd like to see more tables out front of the restaurants, so that people, it looks busy.
See that? That's part of that active camp.
You know, something that made downtown Hood River, besides the sale borders, is the full sale ale brewery. And, you know, they've taken over a lot of downtown, so I envision a, it would be cool to put a brewery in, in the old hardware building.
Yeah. Actually, I was thinking a group of, a group of theater could go really well in this thing. That assumes that you have it.
That will give us something to do. What else? Jeff, there's gotta be, Mark?
Yeah, if you're going in that direction, you might as well get a, like an L.L. Bean store with trail clothing, you know, anything with hiking, maps and boots and, you know, anything with hiking. I think that would copy.
Bike even hiking.
Yeah, outfitters.
Yeah, outfitters shop.
Like, kind of what Mark said, the, the vision of like a Bass Pro Shop, where you have that destination where you have the outdoor mock thing that we have here, like fishing, biking, cycling, but then they could combine a expo-style center in that too, with a hotel combination with it, that type of, whether it's Brass Pro Shop or Bellows or another, another outdoor company like that that would kind of encompass all that at the port, but be part of the whole team down here too. Be integrated that way.
So Jeff, from, from your point of view, do you see the port area integrating with downtown?
Yes.
Can they fit together?
Yes.
Water activity, fishing guides, and nothing really, but you have it on a really good.
Oh, honestly, and, and they buy sports wear too, since there's always a business person that comes in, sells, so that was a good idea about sports.
Would you need, would you need another launch facility that caters to the sports fishermen rather than the same?
We have it, but you have that, yeah. We have that at Tapples.
She's never open.
But, but I, I don't know how busy the launch facility is here.
Mark?
More easement to the port, because, you know, if you have more people, there's only certain ways to get in there, and you're gonna have a lot of pedestrians, so you need, you know, more bridges, more easement to the port.
Is that easier access or improved access?
Probably improved.
What else?
The Pacific Crest Pub would be open as a hostel and be known nationally as the belt buckle of the Pacific Crest Trail.
The belt buckle?
Well, it's, it's, it's a known stopping point on...
So the hostel is known worldwide?
If, if it were open as a hostel, it would be, it would be well-known in the hiking community, yes.
Whoever gets there.
I've never seen any wind surfers in this area. Is there a particular reason why that?
Yeah, I'm a further wind surfer. A little beach, you need a lot of wind to get your sail up quickly, and you have to paddle out further because the little cold is bad kind of area. It's a popular rock lane there, so that they normally go on the other side of the pond, yeah, to the high wind area. So you have to paddle out a lot further to catch the wind.
So this is not a wind surfing?
Well, rather than the wind surfing, you need to drive to the beach a few times, and it's kind of a, kind of a pole that doesn't give the wind immediately. You have to kind of paddle out further out into the river to catch that wind.
Blackberry Beach.
Yeah, I was gonna say on Blackberry Beach.
We have a new one.
What, what else? Chuck, what's missing?
Well, I think... Getting our arms around the vision still, maybe there's the risks of things, and so, you know, some, some ways this, this needs to, needs to keep flowing into what, what it asks and where the steps and how we, how we move forward, what, what the little things can we do today and what big things can we do in a year.
So we're a community that had an action plan to deliver this.
Yes. Fifteen years ago, coming up on twenty, what do we want to look like in five years, ten years, twenty years? We could very well just look like...
What's on everyone's cell phone? Yeah, yeah.
I only have one good idea, if this is a good idea.
But wait, 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 we gotta have absolute silence for this, this is gonna be it. Go ahead.
I, I think, I think we, we should have like a commuter boat going between here and Stevenson. So if we don't get them off the freeway, we can, you know, hijack them from Stevenson over here.
So it's Cascade Locks, the Stevenson. Super. Alright, anybody else?
One other thing that hasn't been, we need to cooperate with all the other communities within the board. Because cooperation, if we can't get them here to play golf, if we don't have enough room, they can sail here and the other family members can go golfing across the river or somewhere, but we need to have cooperation with all the communities in it.
That's right.
And, and the other thing is, we haven't, no one's mentioned by having other events, like Spokane has Hoop Fest, where they have thousands of kids, they three-on-three, and they put basketball hoops all throughout the city of Spokane and shut the city streets down. Palm Springs, every Thursday night has a, kind of like a Saturday market, and they shut the main streets down, and they have a, hundred and seventy-five booths are there with music going on. So we need to look at other events that also bring people here.
Yeah, that's interesting that Joanne brought that out, because I, Dawn and I had gone by the school area, Oh, that's interesting that Joanne brought that out, because I, Dawn and I had gone by the school area, and of course, it's very key at the field most of the time now. However, on, I think it was a Saturday or Sunday, quite regularly, you would see these people playing volleyball. And I'm thinking, oh my goodness sake, you know, to have some competition on the weekly or just open it up and bring people, hey, bring your net, play volleyball, and maybe have some prize later on or whatever.
Yes.
Uh, but, but thanks for bringing it up.
Yeah.
Um, it would be nice to see City Hall not here and more in downtown, and also to have that twenty-four hour booth for all the businesses to play.
So where would you move City Hall?
Somewhere down there.
The, the property you own.
Or it's down closer to the businesses.
Property you own.
And it's tourism there.
Well, there's a, there's a plan here at City Hall somewhere, of the City Hall where the fire station is, including a library and a bath, public bathroom.
Yeah, and do you know when I was the young kid?
I was in some closet somewhere.
We have, it was City Hall was down there.
Jeff.
A joint building and between the port and the city.
Yep.
For a city, City Hall or Port Commission Building on Port property of Knappel's Chuck, I mean, so there's property somewhere around the Bridge of the Gods area, you're talking about one of those grand vision of things if we're looking thirty years from now. There's a couple acres that, so I don't have that any time there.
Yes.
A shuttle service to shuttle people to Hood River or Stevenson or something like that?
Enter city shuttle?
Yeah.
Mary.
Um, just kind of build on that idea and what Joanne mentioned about rev, uh, transportation revolution, uh, if we could have, um, an electric train or some sort of a train that could take, that could, um, like an extension of Max or something, would be kind of like a shuttle, but it could have that, that stop here in Cascade Locks that Dave was mentioning.
Well, and track, I, didn't you want to stop here?
Yes.
All right, Randy and then Jeff, Chuck, would you have your hand up? Okay, go ahead.
Um, outdoors spurts equipment rental, um, kayaks, bikes, sailboats, guide tour, could, could buy all those.
We're talking a lot about sporting activities, because that's what I see on the uprise of Cascade Locks. We just recently had the disc golf players come out here, they loved it, because I love even playing on a bad rainy day. You know, we've got, the port has got some, uh, from building a trail out here, we're talking to people that are in, that are bike, that do motor, or bike, motocross type, you know, mobile racing and, and tons of people come out for that kind of stuff, so. Think about all the things we can do to draw people into town, we, you know, that's what we need to do, is think of how we can have these events to bring them into town. We're already bringing sailing in, you know, at a pretty good clip, so.
Chuck, then we go to Mark.
Assist in the trails for bikes and pedestrians that connect the whole community, that they're dedicated.
Waterfront views.
I'd like to see a bike trail all the way down Forest Lane, because that's where we bike and it's really, uh, hot holes and gravel and dangerous, but it leads to the beautiful trails to the waterfall.
Okay, Mark, you have it?
Yeah, I, I think bring some old ships up here and have, uh, you know, it would really fit, this town to have, uh, Pirate Days, and, uh, I know they do it in Portland underneath the, uh, St. John's Bridge, that's huge, and, uh, I think something like that would really, uh, you know, turn out good in this town.
For events, for avid events?
Yeah.
All right, what else? Holly, would you give me a hand, let's pull all this down, because now we're gonna go to, we're gonna go to number two. So what is it, begin to think now, what is it we need to do to deliver this vision? Just take, get these and put them down so we can still see them.
I think.
Hold on, I gotta get more paper. It's a technical moment. This is about as high-tech as I get, folks. Bugs howling. Why don't you put it down lower? All right, now we're switching gears. We're going from what we envisioned to what do we have to do to get there? Yes?
I see all these huge projects that we want to do in the future. We can't all do it tomorrow, it's not gonna happen, it costs money, takes time, it's planning. We need to invest small things right now with big impact. We're a town that doesn't have a lot of money, we don't have a lot of cash flow, so we need to make those smart choices that feed that energy, and that's one of the projects I have, is flower baskets. Very economical way that feeds that vibrancy to a city, um, creates, um, businesses, motivating other businesses to start investing in their, um, shop fronts. I think it's a little cost-effective but very smart choices that are gonna pop and start kind of a.
Okay, Dave and then Randy.
I, I think it would, you know, go all, the full length of one of them and look at every tax lot, every building, every vacant lot, and we develop a, a development plan for that tax lot, you know, what, what is the best possible use and vision for that building or for that vacant lot?
Okay, Randy?
Uh, study, learn from other successful communities, what steps have they taken to get to where they've ended up? Try to hasten our pace.
So are you suggesting maybe we put?
I'm thinking one more.
Put everybody in a bus and take them there and see what they did there?
Sure, yeah.
Stay overnight too.
There we go.
Two.
You would, as she points out, you would gain a lot if you went and looked at what some of these other communities have done, and Troutdale is a very good example. Twenty years ago, if you would have suggested we're gonna have an archway of jumping salmon as the entry to our community, you probably would have got lapped off on Main Street, and today it's reality. They got it because they envisioned it. Jeff, remember?
I was gonna say, part of that was to talk to their, their, uh, community organizers that accomplished it, not just like the.
I think it kind of goes along with what Randy said, but it's trust the experts, the vision, have the fortitude and the courage to follow that plan, that's, I think, that's the biggest part of that action is the follow-through of that, because there's gonna be bumps in that road, you just have to have the fortitude to afford it that.
So Jeff, I'm gonna paraphrase what you just said, and if I go too far, you correct me, okay?
Go right ahead.
One of the things you said was vision.
Right.
Let's, let's have an agreed-upon vision. Now, I know you just finished writing your vision, but what, what Jeff is telling us, in order for us to make this progress, we've all got to come to agreement about where it is we're gonna go. Yes?
And with that vision, we have to ask the city, what funds have we set aside, what is planned for city development, beautification, because that is, I mean, you can't start something if you don't have investment money. Um, we know our city does, we just don't know how much money we have.
Okay, what else? What is it we have to do to deliver that vision? Yes?
Get the community involved as volunteers as much as you can.
United Front.
United Front?
United Front, otherwise it doesn't work.
Yes?
You have to have a financial plan. That's the tough one.
I think with creating, um, volunteers, you have to start a sense of pride in your community, that it, that other people will want to start things and finish things.
Dave?
Uh, to develop a list of all of the possible resources you have for funding and guidance, for the state programs, grants, uh, uh, extended programs, matching funds program, other partners that are willing to contribute.
What else do we have to do?
Have energy.
We have to have energy.
Energy, that's right.
Spirit.
I think starting with success, one project and having one really good success, because it's one project that just shows the downtown, like flower baskets, wow, we have something, just start us, you know.
Gail?
I, I think, I think from, oh, this summer, there has to be a prioritization of the action plans and a cost for each action plan, so, I mean, realizing money's gonna be short, it seems like the target, the least expensive things first. And, uh, that's, that's one thing I would look for.
Well, it doesn't take too much, uh, it just takes energy to pull weeds, cut grass, all of that is to start.
If that's a priority, then that's, uh, that's a place to start.
There's, there, there's a glaring thing out there that we need to do, what is it?
One, one thing I think we need to help, while I, is the number two one is look at every lot, de- develop the best possible use, but we need to help people who own closed businesses in town get them open. Get those buildings open, get those businesses active.
But see, businesses don't want to come here if you don't invest in their city. You have to start where you, um, what is that saying, investment proceeds productivity or, or, you know, um, you, you have to invest, and that's one thing our, our city and community doesn't realize. You have to invest somewhere and then you start to see a ripple effect of people.
That's right, and what do you need to be able to invest?
Yeah, to know what your, your money is, your, um, funds, and then you need to start spending wisely on things that are gonna be most impactful.
Well, to invest, if, in looking at an investment, if we were gonna put money in here, being younger, we will look at the people that are coming. Is it gonna be viable, are there enough people coming into this community right now, or are we promoting enough things that will generate more people to come in to support our business? That's, as far as an investor goes, that's.
So you're saying we've gotta get more people to come here?
And, and the, and the things promote the sailing, promote any biking, promote, promote, and do it very well.
Dave?
Uh, it would probably be good if, if, if a, an, an effort to, uh, push tourism to its full potential, some type of marketing research to find out, you know, where's the best place to spend money to bring the most people that are gonna leave the most money in town. Because some visitors don't leave money in town, frankly, they come and they leave.
That's true, but if they have a good experience, if the town feels well, if it's a cozy feeling, clean feeling, they may not buy anything the first time around, they might be probably will buy a scree. But anyway, aside from that, word of mouth, we have a very nice experience, the people are hospitable, it's clean. Word of mouth is good advertising.
I don't think we have a lack of tourists coming here, I mean, it's beautiful. I remember coming here when I was a small child, my parents would bring it here, um, we didn't spend a lot of time in the downtown, we'd always go to the port, um, there's not a lack of tourists, it's just, there's a lack of fundamental things in our city that entice them to stay and spend money, so, I mean, we're there, we have the meat of everything that a tourist town wants, beautiful landscape, river, you know, recreational things. We just need to invest in our, in our city. I mean, look at the port, people go to the port because it's beautiful, there's trails along the river, um, people wouldn't necessarily remember the port if, if it, if it had weeds, if the park wasn't beautiful, if it didn't have everything nice and accommodating, so.
Yes, and then that.
I think you have to understand, though, the port puts over three hundred thousand dollars a year in the park, you know, to keep it that, and in some way, you know, you have to come up with those dollars. So the vision, you have to be doing something that you can, you know, that will perpetuate those dollars coming back, so you can do something with it.
Yes. What we do in our downtown is wanting to impact what our business community would look like in the future, and we could be like the.
So you, you gotta know your finances, you gotta know what they are, where you're gonna go get them.
Bill, the American.
Well, I just wanted to make sure we got Dave's point about market research for tourism.
Right, yes. Do you have any interest in downtown revitalization?
I, I don't think we've asked for a long time, so.
Ask it then.
So now let's, let's go back to the threshold question here, you've already done a great job of creating some vision elements, and you talked about what actions you need to begin taking to deliver this vision. What's missing from your list, Jeff?
The vision of the city and the port of Cascade Locks is to provide a business, or strong business opportunity, that's kind of where I'm at, but that's, I think that's where we're trying to go with that, as a small, one sentence, and then build upon that for the subcommittee to follow through with that vision. Correct me if I'm wrong?
We need a committee.
Well, you're talking steering committee, so.
Steering committee?
We need a committee. We need a committee.
We need a committee.
We need a committee.
Who's gonna be in charge of finalizing the vision and putting together our plan so that the Port Commission and the City Council have something to respond to? Is there, and, and anybody disagree with Jeff's suggestion?
I'm handling the steering committee, it's important.
Now, this is where you can get yourself out of here before midnight. So who wants to work on the steering committee to pull all this together?
How, how, did you have more than one person?
Who else?
I will. Flowers, Jessie.
And, and the identity of your name, because.
J.Y.D.A.
Who else? Kayla.
It's our choice, hand up.
Who's? You wanna help out?
No, he's not letting you do.
I have to develop a business.
Joanne? Two ends or what?
Two, J.O.E.I.N.N.E.
E.I.
Uh-huh, lots of vowels.
Okay, got it. Who else? Who else is gonna volunteer to be on the steering committee to pull this together? Mark? How many business people? How many business people in Cascade Locks are on this list?
Tom?
Tom?
Because the business people are gonna be the beneficiaries of anything that you do, big or small. Mark?
Depends what day, what time.
Four A.M. Just be you and I for four. Anybody else?
Oh, I'm already on the tourism committee and I have like all the prices, all, everything that I need to present.
So you need to be on this steering committee?
I just wanna move forward. I just wanna present what I have. I don't wanna be on another committee because I'm already on a committee. I just want to present what I have to our city and my, my.
So give me your name. We'll like you a presenter.
Jessie.
J E S S?
I E.
Now Jessie has lots of flowers.
She's stunning.
Data that she wants to present.
Data, yeah.
All right, who else? Who else wants to be on the steering committee?
Lots of business people aren't here. I think we need to get some word out.
I suggest, um, Connie, no, Jim Holber, or the Community Action Team. Either you be on it or have somebody, although Chuck, you usually are there, Community Action.
Sandy plays a good role.
Then, yeah, Sandy plays a good role.
And I think Sandy wanted to be on.
So if you're not here, you get volunteered?
Yes.
Yeah.
Here's how, here's how this works. How, how many of you were?
Heather had her hand up. I saw Heather, she had her hand up.
How many of you were in the room when Mike Reisdale was here talking about what we need to do? Here's what, here's what we can do in Cascade Locks that would make this place actually come to greater light. If we develop, we take all of these vision elements and create a dynamic and exciting vision that we can all agree to, and an action plan that involves all of your suggestions here. And then took that door-to-door into the downtown business community so they can see, so Joy could see that we are interested in making him a much more successful business person. So that everybody can see that. So that Heather knows, we're all working to make her a greater success. You didn't see things happen overnight. Now, did I miss somebody whose name was gonna be on the steering committee?
Gary Moncock might be a good one too.
You're gonna be on there?
Good.
We'll meet at four A.M., okay?
Do you bring ice cream?
All right, anybody else?
Gary Moncock might be a good one too. I know he's been real into this.
We gotta find something for Gary to do anyway.
Yeah.
All right, anything else? Anybody else?
At some point, you have to have, I think, somebody tethered or two, at least talk to one of the, the planning commissioners to kind of get that idea going, back and forth with that, at least have that connection that whether, I don't want to throw Bobby under the bus and say he should be part of that, but a federal planning commissioner should be part of that, to be, be with that.
So Bobby, are you willing to be on it?
Maybe, you know, maybe Larry Cramlett would be.
So, so a tie with the planning?
Yeah, there must be a tie to planning.
All right, so we can talk. Okay. It's eight fifteen and you're done. See, when you really work hard, you can get out of here before midnight. Anybody have anything else to add before we let you go home?
I have one thing. It's a quote. Victor Hugo said this, "There's nothing like a dream to create a future." There's nothing like a dream to create a future. So we have a future.
Yes, Joanne?
Does the steering committee need to set up, do we need to stay and set up a time where we can meet? Or do we just leave tonight?
That is a great suggestion. So if you're on it, if you volunteer to be on the steering committee, hang back and we'll set up your first meeting. Thank you very much for coming down to the city to have our revitalization. You are now excused for official辞呈.